Yes, we were not here last night. How are you?
Really? Yeah, I'm sorry. It was all good. Yeah. Works. It works. It works. That's exciting.
I hadn't heard that. How are you? How are you?
Hi. Me too. Isn't that George? Yes, yes, there's.
I just, I just rejected him.
So I, well, let me tell you about the big score I got. I had the Christopher Pender, the R and B Foundation, does a big offer for Raffle. And so I asked a lot of people to be, ended up getting three soft side.
What, what's his, you know?
Sixty six. Yes, sir. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, sure. Sure.
Yes.
He owns banks. They owe him so much back salary. Correct. Or he went bankrupt. They owe him so much money. He took over on the show. Yeah, no doubt. And he pays back everything he's got to pay him up. Didn't have any money left that he paid back. You know what I'm saying? But every day. He wants your bank.
Forrest, what is gentleman's. Terry Fuller.
Yeah, they're one of the top franchises in sports now. But yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to ask everyone to either silence or turn off your electronic devices, please. All right, it is time to call the regular monthly meeting of the Madison County Board of County Commissioners to order. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. We have the agenda before us for which we need to make a couple of additions. We need to add as the third item, Mr. Terry Fuller, who is here this evening from Raleigh to talk with us. And that will move all the numbered items down by one number. And then we will also need to add a closed session at the end of public comment prior to adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, if you could also delete number nine, personnel.
Correct.
And number eleven D surplus property.
Number eleven D surplus property. Any other corrections, gentlemen, to the agenda? The chair will move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, raise your right hand. We have an agenda. At this time, we will look at the March 12th special minutes and March 12th regular minutes and March 19th special minutes that were submitted. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as submitted by the clerk?
Mr. Chair, having reviewed all three sets of minutes prior to the meeting and finding no errors in them, I move that they be approved as submitted.
Motion to approve. We have a second. Further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, please raise your right hand. The minutes are approved and now part of the record. Forrest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the next item added to your agenda tonight. Last week, many have heard, the driver's license office in Marshall was closed down without really any notice to the county or the community. Been spending a few days sort of figuring out what was going on there. And I know there've been several who've been active in helping with that. Commissioner Wetherspoons made some calls. Representative Michelle Presnell's been very helpful. Governor's Office has been making, you know, checking on it for us. And we have with us tonight sort of answered questions and explained kind of how we got here to find out what's going on next. Mr. Terry Fuller, who is the chief examiner for North Carolina Division of Motor Vehicles. Mr. Fuller, appreciate you coming to this. Come on.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
If you would be, we need a microphone over there. Let's take one of these.
Yeah, just pull it off.
Yeah, I got you. Yes, and if you would speak into the microphone, the meetings are streamed live and it doesn't pick up well if we don't. So welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilmembers, inviting us here. On behalf of Commissioner Jessup, we apologize for the abruptness of our departure. Unfortunately, our hand was somewhat forced by the landowner, landlord, requiring a 50% increase in. When he's talking on the phone or the.
Please.
Yeah, you've got to. Requiring a 50% increase in our lease agreement, to which our state property only allows 3% per year.
50%?
We maintained that office for as long as we could. After our examiner there, longtime examiner, fell ill and went out on family medical leave and we staffed that office out of the Asheville Driver's License Office on Patton Avenue. That office also has some shortages and it was, we had one examiner come down and provide that service and then she has since departed. And it's been due to constraints with our staffing there at that office, we were unable to support the Marshall office. Given the totality of the rent increase and also the sickness of our examiner, the decision was made to close that office immediately. And we could have done a better job. We apologize and we will inform you in due time.
A couple of, a couple of obvious questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If the county were in a position willing to assist in finding a suitable place, including a place immediately, that would satisfy the budget requirements for the office? I can only speak for myself, but I think that the county management and the county commissioners would be very eager to solve your space issue and we can make that work effective immediately. Okay?
I will take that to Commissioner Jessup and give him that word. I think right now that we're at a point where we're probably not going to be able to do it immediately because of staffing concerns. Although we will take that under consideration and go forward with it.
Well, I believe that the citizens of Madison County and North Buncombe that that office serves.
Yes, sir.
Deserve to have that service, okay? And from our point of view, we will do everything in our power to ensure that we provide that space.
Yes, sir.
And would strongly encourage that the staffing be made available, that position be filled. Because I serve on the State Board of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
And all across rural North Carolina, rural North Carolina is suffering, okay? Bit by bit, one stab wound at a time. The withdrawal of Raleigh from rural North Carolina is being felt very heavily. Now, that's not, not your fault.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you have, and I'm not meaning to in any way criticize.
I understand your concern.
However, you know, we can work with you on the space issue.
Yes, sir.
And we want to ask you and the people that you work with in Raleigh to help us work on the staffing side.
Yes, sir.
And do whatever we need to do, and that includes increased support for your agency at the state level.
Yes, sir.
All right, in order to provide for Madison County and not just Madison County, but other counties. Because if you're having to make personnel decisions that clearly disenfranchise local folks, and I expect we're not by ourselves.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Then we're happy to help you also help the rest of the citizens of state of North Carolina. And we ask you to help us help you and you help us.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Gentlemen, I didn't mean to.
No, no, that's okay. I'm, Mr. Fuller, on behalf of this board, I would like to request that the DMV post the position of examiner in Madison County and work towards filling that position as swiftly as possible. Unfortunately, right now, this examiner is on short-term disability. And that position cannot be vacated for one year, okay? We, we would have to fill or fill the void of that examiner with an examiner from another office. Got you. So are there, it seems like a logical solution would be to have some, some, I guess, temporary employees? Yes, sir. Positions created within the division? Yes, sir. We doing that across the state and other locations. We also have some positions here in Buncombe County or in Buncombe County that we've been unable to fill. We just don't have the applicants. They're not for examiners, but they're for greeters. And we've not been real successful. This program's been going on for about two years now. We just recently made an offer for a greeter at the Asheville office, to which they accepted. And this is the first one we've been able to secure in that period of time. It is a challenge, but it's not outside of what we might possibly do in the future. Well, and, and a lot of employers are facing those challenges. I understand a lot of, and Wigan County government have had to adjust our hiring practices in order to try and fill positions. And whether that means looking at different qualifications, increasing pay, that sort of thing. We've had to make that decision here, too. So I understand your pain and I know it's not you specifically. I'm not, my comment. Well, it's my pain. I'm responsible for the day-to-day operations from everything from Winston-Salem over this way. I got you. So it is, it is, it is, it is a feeling. Sure. Thank you.
So are you saying it could be closed for up to a year?
Well, we certainly want to take in consideration your, your request and your offer. And so I'll take that back. So I can't, I can't say how long it will be closed, but it's possible. I won't, I'll try to be as transparent as I can. Yes, sir.
Mr. Fuller, first I want to thank you for coming out and meeting with us.
Yes, sir, as well.
And now I'll turn a little nastier. Of a hundred counties in North Carolina, does, is there any other counties that do not have this type of officer?
Yes, sir, there is.
In western North Carolina, what other county does not have an officer?
I can't say that right offhand.
Look, let me tell you how we feel. Sometimes we feel that we are not looked at at the top of the agenda, that Buncombe County is the fat child.
Yes, sir.
And that we, we get what's left under the table. And I know, I know you're just the messenger, but we have, we have a lot of elderly citizens here.
Yes, sir.
That use that. And I know you're just the messenger.
Yes, sir.
That's why I said thank you for coming. But, but my point is, sometimes we have to, we have to make arrangements from the larger, more well-funded places to take care of people like us and rule that we need to serve just as much as anybody else does. And I know you've got to make that budget, you've got to take it to hire people.
Yes, sir.
But no matter what you said and goes, we're going to feel like we were left out without our person here.
Understood.
So for me, you know, I don't have any Buncombe halves and I know the disability, I got that. But you know, I echo my, my colleagues here is, you know, I think we're entitled to one. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And of course, we pray for our, the speedy recovery of our.
Indeed.
Current examiner as well in the meantime. I mean, it's not, not to be callous towards her situation at all.
Right.
So we want her back too. She was a, she was a good, good examiner.
I was a little unclear. So you've got these greeter positions, which I assume are a little different type. Examiner's probably a higher level, higher paid position, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir, it is.
Do you have vacant examiner positions in the region or a position that's funded that if it were filled, there would be a person available to be out here to do filling?
I think currently across what we call District Seven, which is from Morganton over this area, we have approximately five vacancies at this time. And those are due to various reasons. Retiring, you know, the supervisor that was over that area just retired Friday. And that's the reason why I'm here, because she wasn't available. I got a bone to pick with her tomorrow. Seriously, though, we try to fill those positions as quickly as possible. It's usually about when we get a vacancy, if we know that the vacancy's coming, we create an anticipated posting. That posting is put up for a week. It advertises, the qualified candidates are selected and interviewed and then sent forward for background checks and, and various other HR items. It usually takes anywhere from 30 to 45 days sometimes to make a job offer. So during that time, I can tell you Hendersonville has three shortages in that office alone and they're a five-man office. So I'm pulling from offices in the, in the area from Clyde down to, can't think of the name of it, but other offices in that area, just to make sure. That office suffers quite a bit and so we're funneling people over there. So that's, that's how we operate. Asheville is kind of the central place where we provide relief. So if Examiner Osborne wanted to take a vacation day, we would send somebody over there. But it's just the way the county's set up. We have a lot of one and two and three-man offices in this area.
Okay. You have a mobile service, I believe?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. During this period of time, what would be the possibility of Madison County receiving at least a part-time access to that mobile service?
I would say that, that chances are, are good. I will certainly, I'm not in a position to offer that, but I can tell you that we do have a position or a mobile solution. It requires brick and mortar, previous to our RV units that we used to run out of this county. And it's all dependent on a 4G wireless signal. So there would be some testing required. Currently, that unit operates out of the Asheville office. It does take that office down to examiners. Ideally, we'd love to have permanent examiners assigned to that unit. So when they go out and deploy, they would not pull the office down. And so that's, that's one of the things that we're requesting from legislators.
Well, we would certainly like for you to put that on your list of our request and providing the 4G in wherever we would need to, that would not be an issue. We're actually within the core of the county very well equipped, including in this building you are here and all of our government offices.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. Gentlemen?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for driving all the way down from Raleigh.
You're absolutely welcome.
Welcome to what we consider western North Carolina.
I agree.
I think Forrest, sir, may have one more question.
Thank you, sir.
So we'll follow up tomorrow and we'll see just kind of what, how we stay updated going forward.
Yes, sir. Give me a chance to say to Commissioner first thing in the morning and feel free, you can send your email back to Ms. Horton. She's, she's retired, she's on vacation, but that will get forwarded to me. All right?
And do, we do really thank you again.
Yes, sir.
For taking your time to come see us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Jan Lounsbury?
Can you hear me?
Yes. But do, do try to speak a little more into the mic, please.
I don't, I don't have a lot of practice with this. Only once in a quarter.
Well, the people that watch us on the internet, they, they really, really.
I do appreciate it.
Yeah, they really do.
If you hold it, you've got to hold it pretty close. Kind of right over here.
Okay. The North Carolina Senior Tarmill Legislators met March the 12th and 13th in Raleigh. This was our, the theme was advocacy, advocacy for seniors. And so it was prepping us to go to visit our representatives on the legislative, while they're in the gentle session. So the first day, we had speaker from the Vision of Aging and Adult Services. And one of the comments that she made that really impressed me was that the county departments of social services over the whole state have reported 30,000 complaints for adult protective services in the year 2018, which was an increase over the year before that. And one reason that is so important is because we are an aging society. And so the, the concern is that that's going to become more severe as time passes. So we need to beat the crowd for that. Another one was Roger Manis, who was the Chair of the Governor's Advisory Council on Aging, also spoke to us about advocacy. So we had a lot of questions and answers for that. The second day, we actually traveled to the state legislative building and to advocate for our priorities. And there was a list of five of those, which all of you have, have your gold sheets that I gave you the last time I was here. But just to inform, make the community aware of those five priorities that we have, I'll just cover those real quick.
Yes.
The first one was increased funding for North Carolina Home and Community Care Block Grant. And that is actually House Bill 335, if you ever, if you want to follow that on the legislative tracker. And it has been passed on the first reading and now is in appropriations and the Vision of Health and Human Services, waiting for other action. Another one was to maintain and increase funding for senior centers. Increased funding for Project Care, which is caregiver alternatives to running on empty, which is a program for caregivers of family members or friends with Alzheimer's and dementia, so they can have some respite. Another one is strengthen and fund North Carolina's Adult Protective Services Program. And the last one is to increase staff to patient ratios in nursing homes. That is the new one that has never been addressed. So when we met with Representative Michelle Presnell and Senator Ralph Heiss, they were both very supportive and encouraging of our priorities. And so we felt like we'll get the support to do this. It takes more than those two people, so hopefully they all will. But as we were meeting with Senator Heiss, he was on his way to a health committee, which he is part of. And he invited us to join, to come witness this voting session that they were going to have on Senate Bill 168. It wasn't one of our senior priorities, but we were there, so we sat in on it. And it was to expand allowable medical use of CPD oil. And so I thought this was interesting because we had just gotten such a store in Madison County. So our next meeting is June the 26th and 27th in Raleigh. And I hope by July's meeting, I'll be able to tell you these have all been funded and passed and it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chan. Barbara Zimmerman?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Hey, my name is Barbara Zimmerman and I am part of a group, a man and a group, I guess, that we've been planning this litter sweep contest. And this flyer that I just passed out gives you the bare bones about the contest and the group that was meeting. We worked on it. We, we had four or five meetings of the I-26 Welcome Center. Vicki Seelock, who is the administrator, I guess.
Yeah, Director of the.
I don't know what her name is up there. She was very instrumental in, in getting this group together. But anyway, I, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time. I think anybody that lives in Madison County recognizes the extreme beauty of the place. I mean, it's just gorgeous. There's hardly anywhere like it. The mountains, the water, the, it's just incredibly beautiful. But also, it's just about anywhere you drive, especially in the wintertime anyway, you can really see the problem with the litter in the county. And it's a, so anyway, a lot of us were concerned about it. We got this group together and I just want to give a, a real quick, to tell you who's on the group. We had support from the county commissioners, very strong support. The Tourism Development Committee, is that their title? The Tourism Development Group.
Authority.
They have put up this money for this contest, which is fabulous. They have come forward, I think, with about $2,000 in support of this. And the Extension Service, the North Carolina Extension, the I-26 Welcome Center, the Madison County Welcome Center in Mars Hill, Hot Springs Welcome Center, Sammy Lunsford at the landfill, the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, the Madison County DOT folks, the regional litter abatement people in Buncombe County, Mars Hill College. Those are just a few of the people that helped with this planning. So anyway, we have this contest. And the contest coincides with the statewide litter sweep. Twice a year, North Carolina does this statewide litter sweep in the spring and in the fall. So it coincides with that. The dates for that is a two-week period from April 13th to April 27th. And specifically, we want to target the backroads of Madison County and the communities where we live. The major roads are under contract. State of North Carolina has contracted the major roads like I-26, 2570, Highway 19 going to Burnsville, 208, which is a very dangerous road and it'd be crazy to be out on it picking up trash. Highway 212, Highway 213, those roads are under contract by the state. Some of them are under contract to be picked up 12 times a year. Some of them are under contract to be picked up six times a year. And we need to pay attention to that because a lot of money is paid to these contractors to pick up the litter on those roads. And we need to be paying attention that they are actually out there picking it up once a month or once every two months. But it's in the communities where we live where the litter is not being picked up. And a lot of people were dependent upon the. There's hardly anywhere like it. The mountains, the water, the, it's just incredibly beautiful. But also, it's just about anywhere you drive, especially in the wintertime, anyway, you can really see the problem with the litter in the county. And it's a, so anyway, a lot of us were concerned about it. We got this group together. And I just want to give a real quick, to tell you who's on the group. We had support from the county commissioners, very strong support. The Tourism Development Committee, is that their title? The Tourism Development Group. They have put up this money for this contest, which is fabulous. They have come forward, I think, with about $2,000 in support of this. And the Extension Service, the North Carolina Extension, the I-26 Welcome Center, the Madison County Welcome Center, and Mars Hill Hot Springs Welcome Center, Sammy Lunsford at the landfill, the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, the Madison County DOT folks, the regional litter abatement people in Buncombe County, Mars Hill College. Those are just a few of the people that helped with this planning. So anyway, we have this contest. And the contest coincides with the statewide litter sweep. Twice a year, North Carolina does this statewide litter sweep, in the spring and in the fall. So it coincides with that. The dates for that is a two-week period from April 13th to April 27th. And specifically, we want to target the backroads of Madison County and the communities where we live. The major roads are under contract. State of North Carolina has contracted the major roads, like I-26, 2570, Highway 19 going to Burnsville, 208, which is a very dangerous road, and it'd be crazy to be out on it picking up trash. Highway 212, Highway 213, those roads are under contract by the state. Some of them are under contract to be picked up 12 times a year. Some of them are under contract to be picked up six times a year. And we need to pay attention to that because a lot of money is paid to these contractors to pick up the litter on those roads. And we need to be paying attention that they are actually out there picking it up once a month, or once every two months. But it's in the communities where we live where the litter is not being picked up. And a lot of people were dependent upon the inmates in the past. That program has not existed for several years. And the inmates are not going to go over Luntz Mountain and pick up the litter. They're not going up Spill Corn, they're not going over Lonnett Creek, they're just not doing it. And if you drive on any of those roads, you can see the results of it. But anyway, so here's the contest. We are offering a $1,000 cash prize for the group that picks up the most recyclable bags. Because picking up the trash and then separating it into recyclables is, takes more work. And so we're offering a $1,000 prize for that. And we're offering a $500 prize for just the group that picks up the most bags of unseparated trash. And those are good, those are good prizes, especially if you are a church group, or a Boy Scout group, or a community center, or, you know, any kind of nonprofit, you want to make a little money for your group. That's a pretty good little prize. And we also needed some money from the Tourism Development, they gave us some money to help us buy some supplies. We needed to buy signs, the signs that you put out, caution, litter pickup in progress, that kind of thing. We needed to buy more vests. Anyway, the $2,000, all that money went into prizes and supplies for the contest. So I encourage you, we have a, Vicki Seelock, her staff set up a Facebook page. And it's, if you just go on and Google "The Great Madison County Litter Sweep Contest", or "Litter Sweep MC NC", it's down here on this flyer. You can go on there and get more information about this contest. There are quite a few, quite a few rules for it, for safety reasons, number one. But we had to also follow the guidelines for the North Carolina DOT litter sweep. We had to follow their guidelines. And a lot of that, a lot of the rules of the contest are for safety reasons. But you'll find everything you need to know about how to enter the contest. You have to actually enter it with a group in order to be eligible for this prize. So that's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them, or just go to the Facebook page. All right?
Thank you. Barbara, I want to thank you and everybody else who's been involved in this. This is without doubt the most concentrated effort that Madison County has put forth in my memory. And hopefully, what it will do is encourage as many people as possible to participate in picking it up. And when we had the meetings, that's part of what we talked about. You can hire somebody to go down the road, and while you're picking it up, somebody will throw more trash right on the road. The more people in Madison County we can get to go out and actually take part, and clean the county up itself, and have pride in cleaning up the county and the more communities. And hopefully, we'll get more people to adopt roads. But if people are out there in these communities, all of us out there, picking up, then you're going to have less trash put back on the road. So, but I really appreciate it. It's been one of Barbara's pet things for a long time, and Vicki. And I admire you for sticking to it, Barbara, and for Vicki. And if you had not stuck to it, and Vicki and a few others, it would have never happened. So thank you. Thank you for your honesty.
I'll just say one last thing. We hope we have a good response to this because we'd like to participate in the one in the fall as well, you know. So, yes, ma'am?
I was just...
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes?
So I'm curious to know why the inmates are going out and... I always thought that was a great program to do that.
I don't know exactly, but it's my understanding, or the logic that I've heard behind that, that it was more cost-effective to hire these private contractors to do the job than to pay the, what is it, the prison system people to do the job.
I don't, I don't want to...
But I don't know for sure.
Excuse me, I don't want to cut it off, but the engagement of that sort is really sort of out of order by the rules. And I appreciate your question. But I'm sure Barbara will be around if some of you want to individually ask her. Okay?
Ask her, please.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. All right.
You ready?
Great.
Sheriff Buddy Harwood has asked us, had this board to take a look at, per statute, to give the service weapon to Sergeant Jeffrey Tweed, a 20-plus-year law enforcement veteran. Upon retirement of law enforcement officers, it is allowed by statute, and it is a common practice, to sell them at a reduced rate their service weapon. And that is what we're here tonight. The sheriff has asked us to consider looking at Sergeant Tweed as far as that. He's been with us 20-plus years, both as an SRO at the high school and as one of our emergency response employees. And so that's what I bring to the table.
I have the following resolution. To retired Deputy Jeffrey Tweed, Madison County Sheriff's Department will present his service weapon, serial number BDHTF01 Glock 31, per North Carolina General Statute 20-187.2, for the price of $1. I move that we approve Sheriff Harwood's request to honor a longtime, very devoted servant to Madison County, Jeffrey Tweed. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We are very, very fortunate to have a lot of very dedicated people in Madison County. And I might take a moment of personal privilege. I worked with Jeff when he was Resource Officer at the high school for a number of years, and when I was a system principal. And he, we will miss him. And he is just a great individual, a real asset to the community. All right? All right. Mr. Tammy Cody.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So I have the privilege of sharing with you tonight our 2018 Community Health Assessment. This process began last January. It's a lengthy process. And the Community Health Assessment, also known as the CHA, leads us to better understanding of the health needs of our community. The CHA helps local agencies and organizations work on health issues to ensure that the most pressing health concerns are being addressed, and to plan and coordinate these efforts. It's also part of the strategic plan at the Health Department. So we just want to be sure we're really taking care of and addressing what needs to be addressed. The priorities this year are physical activity and nutrition. And those go together and help with many chronic diseases that we see. And the second one is substance use and mental health. And we know that many of those with substance use disorder suffer from an underlying mental health concern. And these same issues were the issues that we were addressing in our previous CHA. And throughout the region, I am seeing that these are significant issues that we are seeing in western North Carolina and need to be addressed. I'm very excited that for the first time ever, Madison County has a video that I would like to share very short with you tonight.
Good.
All right, thank you. A couple of things I want to point out in regards to our new priorities. We've had a large group in the county working on this because we want to make sure it's not just what we think at the Health Department, but it's the true needs that our residents have. Overweight and obesity can lead to serious health concerns and chronic diseases. 27% of Madison County residents surveyed stated they were at a healthy weight. 72.3% of the respondents stated they were overweight or obese. That's higher than any other area in western North Carolina, the state, or the U.S. Approximately 55% of children in grades K through 8 are at a healthy weight. So we have some work to do. We've been working on it, and we're going to continue to work on it. In the assessment that we started with, 100% of those surveyed thought substance use was a problem within our community with our adults. And it reflects that 94.83% are concerned, are very concerned about pain medications and other prescription medication abuse in our community. So we definitely appreciate the support that we get and the partners that we work with. I'd like to acknowledge the hard work that Lena Stevens and Jody Brazel put into creating this assessment for us. And we'll look forward to working with our community partners on resolving these huge issues. Are there any questions?
I would then like to point out, just a separate issue right on the Health Department. And the county, a very good article, well, good highlight of the work going on in the county in U.S. News and World Report here just in the last few days, that featured the work of the Health Department, Substance Awareness Coalition, Sheriff's Office, Hot Springs Health Program, the number of people on how Madison County's measuring better on several health outcomes. And you all are a huge part of that. The whole community is a huge part of that. But that was really, it's good even to not have the article, but the article was good, too.
Thank you, Forrest. And I would also like to add that Thursday, we have a training that's going to occur that's really good to help the community understand the addiction issue and meth. And later next month, we have a Voices of Hope, featuring a panel discussion of residents from Madison County who've overcome addiction. Because frequently, we only hear of negative outcomes, so we do want to share, there are positives. So I would welcome any of you participating in that. They'll both be very good programs.
Tammy, thank you very much. Dee.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
It's that time of year when I get to come to you on a regular monthly basis and review all the programs that Raleigh requires for our transportation system. So I've sent out in advance two of our policies that need their yearly approval. The first one is the drug and alcohol policy through Madison County Transportation Authority. The highlights are basically that we are zero tolerance, tolerance, we have zero tolerance. All of our employees who are safety sensitive, which is every single person that works for Madison County Transportation Authority, is under the auspices of random drug testing throughout the year. We do about three people per quarter. Next year, it's doubling, there'll be six people per quarter. So random drug testing, and that we're, you know, subject to reasonable suspicion drug and/or alcohol testing when the employer has a reasonable suspicion to do so. So I'm sure you're familiar with these policies. I just need to re-up that you agree to them. Are there any questions about the drug and alcohol?
All right.
All right, let's go to Title VI, which is the review of the Title VI program. Basically, this is Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. It's basically, we receive monies from the federal transit authority, and therefore live under those auspices. And it's required that we make sure that all services we provide are open to, no person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. So that is all of what we do, all passengers, the folks that work there, and all of the above.
But we can throw them out for bad behavior, right, Dee?
We do have a rider policy, which has nothing to do with Title VI, but has a behavior issue policy. Yes, sir. Absolutely. So far, I haven't thrown anybody off.
Good.
Because everybody's awesome here in Madison County and follows the rule. Any questions for Title VI?
We do need motions, correct, Forrest? All right, the chair will entertain. Do we need this, just separate motions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will first need a motion to approve the Madison County Transit Authority Drug and Alcohol Policy as presented by our director.
So moved.
So moved. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Title VI Program Policy Recommendation and for Civil Rights under compliance of statutes as presented by Dee.
So moved.
We have that motion?
Same.
Second? All those in favor? All right, thank you, Dee.
Thank you, gentlemen, and have a good night.
Well, if you could talk, I know the Home Community Care Block Grant came up in Ms. Lounsbury's presentation. Can you talk about how that impacts programs in Madison County?
Yes, so the Home Care Community Block Grant, we've been praying, or doing all the conjuring we can about this awesome bill that's coming through. Basically, it runs everything in the Madison County Community Services. All the services, except for veteran services, receive funding directly from the Home Care Community Block Grant. It helps float the boat to make what we do happen. The flat, there's been a flat rate for the last 10 years on Home Care Community Block Grant, about 10 years. And we're hoping for more funding to be opened up for the state, which would allow us to get some more funding. And this is in-home aids, our nutrition program, both home-delivered and congregant, which is in our community centers. This is also transportation. One, two, three, I think that I've covered those. And quite frankly, without it, we couldn't do what we do. And so if we were able to get some more money, so if you want to press any buttons on any of your folks, and teach them education-wise, and advocate on behalf, I can certainly give you some more information on that. But Ms. Lounsbury's done a great job in being in Raleigh and talking about it. We've got lots of supporters, and it's all across the state. And so this really does support community programs for 60 and above specifically, for our, for our community. And that's what community services, besides transportation, takes care of. 100% of most of what we do is through Home Care Community Block Grant and for over 60. So it's really important. Thank you for that plug.
All right. Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you, Dee.
Carrie Bellamy, come right down.
Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner Gentry and other Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present before the board this evening. I have three items that need your consideration and approval. The first item that I will present is the 2019 amended bylaws for the Madison County Economic Development Board. In 2018, the Madison County... In two thousand eighteen, the Madison County Economic Development Board of Directors began updating their bylaws to accomplish some changes that they had identified, as well as to incorporate some changes the county commissioners identified. The major changes in the bylaws include clarifying language around the board member resignation process, changing the meeting time of the board, including the chair of the board is selected by the county commissioners, and amended the county department that the board will work with within the county. Those were the significant changes that were made. Any questions? If not, we see the motion to approve them.
Okay. Gentlemen, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that the, the bylaws be approved as revised and submitted.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
The next item before you is your consideration and approval of the appointment of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Madison County Economic Development Board's Chair and the re-appointment of two of the board members. During the March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen Madison County Economic Development Board's meeting, the board unanimously supported Mitch Hampton as the board chair. However, we understand that the county commissioners have to approve that recommendation or consider someone else on the board.
Do we, just to point an order, do we need to reappoint Mr. Hampton before we can put him in as the Director because his term's up, correct?
Right, and so that's the next thing, so we can go in the next order.
Okay. All right. So Mitch and Tammy's, they're, both of their appointments were up. We need to, if we, if we so desire, we need to reappoint them first. Then we can do the Director, correct?
And they are both eligible for reappointment.
That's right, of course, the last paragraph of the resolution includes both of those things in it.
Yes, it does.
So if we do the resolution, we kill two birds with one stone.
We do.
It reappoints Tammy and Mitch and to another three-year term and affirms Mitch Hampton as Chair to the Board.
Correct.
So I think if you adopt that resolution, you'll take care of everything.
We cover both sections.
Yes, so.
Mr. Chair, based on counsel from our county attorney and review of the Madison County Economic Development Board of Directors Terms of Service Resolution, I move that this resolution be approved.
And the Chair will second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
And just for clarification, Mr. Chair, that does include the appointment of Mitch as the chairperson?
That is correct. That is what's in the formal mission, yeah.
The final, final item that I have for you this evening is the Madison County Economic Development Board's Legislative Agenda Resolution. In the past, representatives from Madison County have attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Community, County Assembly Day in Raleigh, North Carolina, on behalf of Madison County's government. The County Assembly Day is an opportunity for North Carolina's county officials to meet, meet with and hear from the state's legislative, I'm sorry, representatives. In preparation for the twenty nineteen County Assembly Day, which is scheduled for May first, two thousand nineteen, the Madison County Economic Development Board is requesting the following. Seek the creation of a state-supported funding program for development of speculative businesses and the acquisition and development of land in the state. Seek modifications of state regulations to enhance funding of water and wastewater extensions for all counties in order to increase available marketable product for new or existing companies. Support solutions that increase access to broadband internet access by all communities, companies, and citizens in North Carolina. Seek legislation funding other efforts to expand digital infrastructure broadband capability to the underserved and areas of residents of the state. Support reinstatement of affordable housing tax credits.
Yes.
Seek legislation to increase funding for the state's current film grant program and review existing legislation to allow tax incentives and other measures that will encourage expansion of the statewide film industry. Support increased state funding for transportation, construction, and maintenance needs, and support legislative, legislation to ensure that the strategic transportation investment funding formula recognizes that one size does not fit all and that projects in both rural and urban areas are prioritized in funding. Seek funding to increase access to high-quality childcare and early childhood education.
Yes.
Support state funding and staffing for agricultural research, cooperative extension services, and other agriculture-related efforts, including community conservation assistance program to support the largest economic driver in North Carolina. And these items are from two, two different organizations. They are from the North Carolina Economic Development Associations and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Yes. The Chair will move that we approve the Madison County Economic Development Board's two thousand and nineteen Legislative Agenda.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Rhea.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I apologize for not getting these handed out to you before we started. If you don't mind, if you want to pass it down. I only have two things for you this evening. The first item is Budget Amendment Number Twelve. Not the one that was originally submitted in your packet, but we had a last-minute change.
Correct.
And I believe it got emailed to you yesterday.
Correct.
So we don't have a whole lot on this budget amendment. I'm going to start at the top. The Health Department got a state mini-grant to fund or to create a team-friendly atmosphere at the Health Department of just over twenty thousand dollars. There is a small adjustment in some taxes that we've received. We also received our biannual Medicaid hold harmless dispersment at the end of March that we actually got on the thirty-first, so I want to make sure we got that on here. We don't normally budget for this item because it is based on some interesting algorithm from the state that includes some sort of vortex between sales tax and our Medicaid costs, healthcare costs. And if you can understand that relationship, please explain it to me because I don't understand it. But they put a plug in some program and we hopefully get some money. I don't, last year, I don't think we got any.
It's from a change, the counties used to pay a portion of the Medicaid cost for people who were covered in their county, and that's a very growing cost the state's looking at now. It's a huge cost for the counties. So back in two thousand seven or so, the legislature changed that to where the state took it over. But as a compromise to get the money to do that, they took a portion of the sales tax that was going to the counties and kept it at the state level. So complication from there is exactly like Rhea says, it's a vortex that's supposed to look at how we, how much we spend on Medicaid versus how much we would have received in those revenues. And in recent years, it's worked out where we've got nothing, but this year, we got a nice surprise.
Yes. And so this funding, like the first six months, we get the payment in March, and then for the second six months of the year, we'll get that payment in August. And it's usually close to, I think it's supposed to be a ninety percent at the beginning of the March payment and ten percent in August. I think my first year here, when they true-did up in August, we actually owed money back. And last year, we got nothing at all. So we're on the good so far. The other two things on here, we're receiving some decent interest on our cash management account that's held through the state, so I've increased the budget for that by thirty thousand. And then we are rolling all this back into our, increasing our budget for building repairs and maintenance as we've seen some increased costs here this year. And we want to make sure that we give our maintenance the funds they need to, to keep up with our maintenance stuff.
So the net effect is ninety thousand seven hundred eighty-nine sixty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, increase to both revenues and expenses.
Yes. Okay. Further discussion, gentlemen?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Twelve.
Second.
Second. Again, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you. The last thing I have for you is the tax refunds and releases. First, I apologize, I did not get February's to you last month, so February is in here as well as March.
Okay. Are there any questions, gentlemen? And do we have a motion to approve both February and March?
I have a motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the February and March tax releases and items presented, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Rhea.
Thank you. And I hope to have your financial statements. It was, there was not time to get them fully prepared for this meeting, being so close to the end of the month, so I hope we get those emailed to you by the end of the week and then we can go over them at a future meeting.
Yeah, we are meeting one week early.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
My budget noted that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Forrest.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just have a few things update-wise and then a couple of things on the agenda. The really good event that Cooperative Extension hosted, the week before last, week before last, was the Countywide Farm Breakfast. At Cooperative Extension, they hosted the location, but it was actually a partnership with Soil and Water, Mountain Valleys, RC&amp;D, Farmer's Service Agency, and a couple of other agencies, I believe, that were involved in that. Good event with people from throughout the county who were there, meeting with each other and then meeting with each of those, having the opportunity to get with those resources and learn more about what's going on in the county and what resources are available to farmers. Cooperative Extension did a really good job hosting that. A couple of y'all were able to attend that. Town of Marshall has been announced as a downtown, has been designated as a downtown strong community. That is very good news for them. That is through Department of Commerce, and that will enable them to go through a number of planning activities that they're kicking off this Thursday and Friday. Their Board and their Administrator Nancy Allen and Mayor Jack Wallen are really going big, working hard on that with folks who are coming in. It's a great opportunity for them and good news for, for Marshall. And I do want to thank, you know, the Town of Marshall, we, we share an island with them. And when we had the flood back at the end of December, we had debris everywhere and the partnership in getting that cleaned up between the two, Jamie Chandler with the town, our maintenance crews, our landfill folks helped haul it all. The bridge crew from the Department of Corrections came and helped clean the basement of the gym. It's, a lot of grass still needs to grow, but it's come a long way in a short period of time, but really can't stand up that working at the town. Couple of, I have next to your item, the update, annual update from the Nursing and Adult Care Homes Advisory Committee. This is, there's also a request from them, this is passing, this along. That advisory committee is submitted by John Fenwick, the Secretary, and Ms. Barbara Rice, who's the chairperson. The members of that are Barbara Rice, John Fenwick, Linda Freeman, and Skip Higgins. And they are advocates for our residents who live in homes, from care homes to nursing homes in Madison County. A few years ago, we were, about every month, those who were on board, the interim, who were appointing someone to that, to those seats. And there's, there's a lot of work with them. They get trained and they have to go out and see those folks. These folks are doing a really good job at that. You can see their report there for you to read, but their bottom-line comments is that are that the CAC from Madison County feels confident that the residents in the nursing and adult care facilities are afforded their rights. As listed in the Resident Bill of Rights, in routine interactions with residents, they express appreciation for the staff and facilities and are generally happy with the accommodations. The staff at all facilities seem to genuinely care for their residents and treat them as a family. And there are updates on each facility there for y'all to review, and you can follow up with them if any questions. There is also a request from them as they do their work for a budget allocation of three hundred dollars so they can continue their efforts to support residents in those homes while improving their quality of living. That's helping them with some special items like Easter baskets, cards, et cetera, that come up during the holidays. If that is something the Board wishes to do, there are funds in the budget that can be used for that.
Do we need a motion for that, Forrest?
Yes.
The Chair will move that we approve the requested budget allocation of three hundred dollars that will go to the Madison Community Advisory Committee for the adult care homes and county nursing.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right.
Next, you have your board appointments for the month of April. You have two, two sets, you have that, all of which could be acted on tonight or you could wait if you wish, but you have two seats for potential reappointment on the Board of Health, and you have three positions on the Library Board of Trustees. One of those is eligible and willing for, willing to be reappointed. The other two would need to be replaced. You have some applications attached. And then after that, you have some boards that county commissioners serve on that not can make assignments to.
Mr. Chair, and specifically to the Board of Health positions, we do need to get those filled, so I would, I would like to come before you nominate that we reappoint Hannah Wallen-Harden as our pharmacist for the Board and reappoint Rachel Smith as the Board's registered nurse to serve in those capacities again for another three-year term.
A second. We have a motion and a second to reappoint to the Board of Health Hannah Wallen-Harden and Rachel Smith. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I believe that we also have available to do this evening the Library Board of Trustees, Forrest, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The Chair will move that we, and I believe these are reappointment and new, okay?
You've got two of them that are, that can't be reappointed.
Right. Right. So the one who can be reappointed is Elizabeth Ayers. Am I reading that correct? Am I correct?
Correct.
So I will move that we reappoint Elizabeth Ayers.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Without objection from the other members, I would recommend that we hold these for our next meeting if there is no issue for the remaining ones.
I agree.
We all in agreement?
I think we need, yeah, yeah, but we do need to be diligent about.
Yes.
Getting this, getting these filled.
Yes, and so this will be done at the next meeting. Are we all in agreement?
Agreed.
Okay, very good. Forrest?
Next, Mr. Chairman, you have a list that was provided to you at a previous special meeting that shows the appointed boards on which county commissioners serve as representatives. These are not all up for appointment. This was for all of your information, so I will tell you now, the Board of Health seat with Commissioner Wethel is, is not currently up. Everything else on this list is based on terms as you all see fit. There's no set term for those commissioners, so you all can figure out who wants to serve on each of those now, or you can do some and come back later, whatever you all wish to do. I would say the Via Health Commissioner Advisory Board, the Land of Sky Board of Delegates, the Land of Sky RPO, and the French Broad River MPO are critical regional authorities that it would be really good to have county commissioner represented on.
And, Mr. Chair, I've got a And, Mr. Chair, I've got a potential solution on the Land of Sky, um, Board of Delegates, and Forrest, Donnie, both of you can correct me if I'm wrong on either of these, but I s, I had a conversation with the Director of Land of Sky the other day, and he had indicated that one of the problems that we've had with, with getting, uh, our Commissioners there is, uh, Wayne is, is the current appointee, and I'm the alternate. Um, there have been some communication issues at times with the timing, Wayne not letting me know that he can't get there in time, and me not being able to work my schedule out because I didn't have enough advance notice. In order to solve that problem, what some counties have done is they have actually made a resol, made a, a resolution, uh, to make any of their elected officials, as far as their County Commissioners, eligible to be a delegate. And whomever can attend that particular meeting can serve as a delegate for that particular meeting. Um, so that may be a potential solution for this Board as well.
Very, very good solution.
Um, and it might help out for those of us that have full-time jobs during the week as well to try and, um, make some additional meetings.
Agreed.
Yeah, if you make that in the form of a motion.
All right. So, in regards to the, uh, let's see, make sure I get this right here.
Land of Sky.
In regards to the Land of Sky Board of Delegates.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we, um, make any eligible elected Commissioner, uh, a active delegate to serve on that Board, um, as needed.
Okay. Have a, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, you've just made all of us eligible to be called.
Just all of you don't show up, same thing.
Yeah, what we need to, I, obviously, yeah, only one of us could vote, so if all four of us show up, well, we can't, because it's an illegal meeting for us. So, um, we just need to make sure that no more than two of us ever show up at any given time. So, it will involve a little more communication between us as a Board to make sure that we have that covered.
But we're more apt to be able to have someone there.
Correct.
That's your point.
And, and that's, and that's an important Board to have somebody on, um, and it, it reflects poorly on us when we don't have someone sitting in that seat.
Mm-hmm.
It's a missed opportunity for us. So, um, thank you.
All right. Um, are you happy with continuing to serve on the Land of Sky Rural Planning, the R P O?
Um, me, yes, I'm, I'm, that's fine, yes.
Okay.
And I'll just throw this out there, too. The R P O and M P O typically piggyback one another.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you guys want to leave me on that, uh, the R P O and the M P O, I'm totally okay with that, too, unless someone is just jonesing to do it. I'd be more than happy to give that up to somebody else if they want.
You can have it, brother.
My employer would probably be glad if somebody else took it.
Now, we have an opening on the Via Health Board, okay? I'm willing to volunteer to do that, but if either one of you two gentlemen would like to do that, please give you the opportunity.
I think you'd be a great appointee, Mr. Chair.
Well, I, I.
I'll second. There we go.
Boy, did I ever walk into that one. Okay. So, I will be willing to serve if somebody would nominate.
Mr. Chair, I nominate, uh, Chairman Gentry to serve as the, uh, Representative on the Board for Via Health Advisory Board.
Second. Third.
Do I have the permission to vote? Now, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Now, Forrest, does that cover what we need?
It covers those that are urgent, but I don't think you all voted on the R P O or M P O.
Correct.
If you just, and if you do that, you're, you're good.
All right, um.
And that is the Rural Planning Organization
Right, right.
And Metropolitan Planning Organization, and those look at transportation projects in the region. The R P O is everything in Madison County except for Morris Hill and the area right around it. Morris Hill is considered metropolitan by the federal government, so they are part of the M P O region
Right.
of the rest of Bunton County and Anderson County. So, they're funded, road projects are funded for different criteria for each of those regions.
All right, and Matt, you're willing to continue to serve on those back-to-back?
Um, yes.
You've been doing that, and you've been doing an outstanding job. So, the Chair will move that Commissioner Wecton retain those two slots, and I would, uh, ask one of our two new Commissioners to serve as an alternate for the M P O. Which one of you gentlemen would like to serve as the alternate for the M P O? And Commissioner Nelson will serve as the alternate for the M P O. Okay? So, do we have a motion and a second to that effect?
Make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Before we move on, um, Craig, did you express interest in serving on the Animal Control Board at one point?
I did.
Would you like to do that?
Lord, I'm not sure I do, but yes, I am. I will, yes, yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, uh, or I move to nominate, uh, Craig Goforth to be the Representative on the Animal Control Board for the Commissioners.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Craig Goforth to the Animal Control Board, please raise your right hand. All right.
Any others, anybody wants to jump on tonight, or we want to talk about the rest of them?
Yes, we talked about.
No, no, I guess, that's, that's July.
Okay. I'm early.
We're, we need to be early.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we, um, do we need a motion to post, to continue the rest for the next meeting?
No.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Thanks, Rob.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
It is now time for public comment. I will remind everyone that Forrest is our timekeeper, and we have only four individuals to speak this evening, so I don't think we need to keep someone in a queue, all right? And would again respectfully ask that you please speak into the mic. And our first person this evening is Ellen Pearson. Pearson, yes, sir.
P E A R.
S O N.
Thank you.
Yeah, here's the list.
I'm just keeping it for my notes, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. And again, please speak into the mic. Thank you.
I've used my teacher voice, but, um, I know the mic is for other reasons, too, so I'll try to speak into the mic, too. Uh, my name is Ellen Holmes Pearson. I have addressed you all before. I am a resident of Marshall, and we really appreciate, I think, I speak for a lot of people, who appreciate, uh, your and A V Techs, a combination of the large number of attendees at recent Board of Commissioners meetings, and we hope that that continues. Uh, the live streaming has been a tremendous benefit for those who haven't been able to make it to the meetings. Uh, I'm sure you noticed that the views on the YouTube recordings of your recent meetings have increased considerably. Three hundred and twelve views of the January meeting, over six hundred views of the February meeting, and, uh, so far, a hundred and sixty views of the March meeting. The reality is that there aren't many rooms in the county that, that are going to hold the hundreds of people who have a stake in the Board of Adjustment hearing that will begin on April twenty-second. Um, these folks who've been at the meetings, at the County Commission meetings, these folks who viewed the meetings online, will want to see the proceedings in real time. It's my understanding that the courtroom of Madison County Courthouse will be the venue for the Board of Adjustment sessions related to the asphalt plant conditional use permit. According to the, to today, well, actually, I guess it's tomorrow's issue, uh, the news record, uh, our County Fire Marshal says that the capacity for that room, the courtroom, is between two hundred and two hundred and twenty. Well, I can tell you right now, that's not going to hold us. This is, this is a light turnout, we're resting up, right? So, um, folks are going to be turned away, but anyone and everyone should be able to see the hearings, uh, as they happen, not, not after they happen, but as they happen. Uh, therefore, I request that the County provide live streaming for the Board of Adjustment sessions that will begin on April twenty-second. Live streaming will allow those who cannot get into the courtroom to watch the proceedings in real time. It will also allow folks who cannot view the proceedings as they happen to watch them at a later date. It's your obligation, it's the County's obligation, to make sure that these proceedings are accessible to all interested parties. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Tibbetts?
Hi, I'm Jim Tibbetts, and I live in Marshall, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board again. Um, as part of the air quality permit application, a meteorological report is required to determine state emission levels of asphalt plant. The Marshall asphalt plant application used the EPA-developed Aromod tool to model climate data to make this determination. Now, this data was not from the plant site at all, rather, it was gathered just outside Jupiter, North Carolina. Now, this means that none of the unique characteristics of the Marshall site, including steep terrain, frequent air inversions, or proximity to one of the oldest rivers in the world, are taken into account in this data modeling. Uh, fortunately, we don't need to rely on data modeling to understand firsthand how an asphalt plant interacts with the unique mountain environment of western North Carolina. The asphalt plant site near Burnsville is just twenty-four miles away from the proposed Marshall plant. It was permitted in nine, two thousand nine, and ran until twenty seventeen. In two thousand ten, in a leather, letter to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Natural Resources, George Bond, the Burnsville Plant's Business Manager, stated, and I quote, "Please note in Figure Two that the location of our plant relative to Burnville's, Burnsville's town square will always generate comment on inversion days. This is the reality of our plant location. It is our position that we are in compliance with all federal particulate emission standards and with all state visual opacity standards." Comments from the public to the North Carolina Department of Air Quality continued until the plant was closed. Now, this is important. This is an asphalt plant manager stating that inversions affect emissions, and that even when the plant was totally compliant with state and federal regulations, inversions would continue to have a negative impact on a town one point four miles away. Now, we can look at some of the similarities between the Burnsville plant and the Marshall plant with these, uh, drawings that I'm going to try and hold in bold, and, uh, and, and you can see here, uh, this is one point four miles away, uh, whereas the Marshall plant, thank you, the Marshall plant is one point five miles away. Downtown Marshall is one point five miles away from the post, proposed site. Additionally, you have an elevation, it's actually an elevation, uh, increase, uh, the town is actually higher in Burnsville than the plant, where in Marshall, Marshall is about, mm, three hundred and seventy-five feet lower than the proposed site. And we have the French Broad River here, which would indicate that the inversion issues could be even more complicated than they were in Burnsville. So, please don't let this happen here.
Thank you. Pete? Pete, come on down. Um, I have Pete Flag here, I believe. Yes. Good evening.
How are you?
Fine, I hope you are.
Well, gentlemen, we meet again, uh, and I'd like to talk about a couple of issues tonight. The asphalt plant, uh, has been a problematic, problematic issue, and a major benefit that has been revealed, uh, concerns, uh, issues that must be addressed by the County Commissioners, their employees, and people of the county. Resolution of these items can only lead to better decision-making opportunities for the county. Over the, the years, three planning documents have been created to guide the county. These were created, paid for by the Commissioners, approved by the Commissioners, the Comprehensive Plan, the Land Use Ordinance, and the Emergency Response Plan. After reading all three repeatedly, it has become extremely obvious to me that the plans are not integrated, nor are they necessarily considered as part of the decision-making process. The, uh, the fact is that they must be considered, and they must be integrated. There are concerns and realities embedded in each document that impact their companion documents as well. There are items that represent major concerns raised in one document that are not addressed in the others. Many of these clearly involve environment, health, and safety. Some of the, some of the statements in these documents also translate to potential costs and risk exposures which could have serious financial impact upon this county. Now, I'm not giving you specific examples in each one of these documents, but I can tell you after reading it, there is an interrelationship that this Board must work out. Regardless, it is time to continue to work together to integrate our vision for the future, for the benefit of all, and for the best decision-making possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly West? Thank you. Good evening, Holly.
Hi. Let's see if I can get words together. Hi, everybody, I'm Holly West. I'm a resident of Madison County and one of your local business owners, that was, is within the bubble that we're all talking about. I'm going to shoot from the hip, I'm going to do best that I can, but I started my business in two thousand fourteen, um, so we are coming up on our fifth anniversary. It has been a fantastic journey. I've fed probably most of you in this room, and it's been incredible. Um, you know, I contribute to the tax base that everybody is talking about. It may only be about twenty thousand dollars a year, but at least fifteen of that comes from tourists, and I love you guys, and I love seeing you every day, but this is our driving force in our county, is tourists. And where are we, I'm sorry, I've been thinking about this for months, but it's not all there. I just, I don't want to see my livelihood, the thing that I have worked so hard to do and employ Marshall people, just kind of be forgotten, you know, because we have an opportunity to put an asphalt plant in that benefits one. Now, that equates to me taking over the funeral home and putting in a Cisco warehouse that only I have access to. It's just a thought, guys, just a thought. You know, and I would have to bring all these trucks in to stock shelves, and maybe have five people stocking it for me, just me. You know, and how fair is that, really? It's not. It's not fair, and I love my livelihood, and I truly believe that everybody deserves to make the best living they can doing what they can, but the choice of one should not affect the livelihoods of many. So, that's what I got.
Thank you. All right, being no other business on the approved agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion for the Board to go into executive session for personnel, property, and attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
Motion, second. All those in favor of going into executive session, please raise your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in executive session. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Craig, what happened?